The following program is sponsored by the Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Regional Planning Commission meeting, February 15th, 2023.
We have a call to order on Wednesday, February 15th, Regional Planning Commission. And we have Jesse Lewis in the line.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start out with public comment. Public comments will be run in three minutes each per person, and we may prohibit comment if the content of the comments are woefully disruptive, meetings are being slanderous or offensive or inflammatory, et cetera. So anyway, we're going to open up for public comment.
You can do it either way if you want. If it is that, I would recommend you just do what it says. Have a public comment.
Okay, Kerry. Kerry Pintar, 1417 Mill Street, Ely. I have comments to go during those hearings, but I just wanted to say to this ward, please give a ton of consideration tonight to these items that are coming before you. We have a considerable housing crisis in Ely, and we all understand that, but making bad decisions tonight continue to affect. We've got problems on 17th Street with Summerall and the lots they gave him to build on. We've got problems with the Joneses and the lots they gave them to build on that they've since sold to somebody else. And we've got more issues that are going to come of these two items that are on here tonight asking to be done. So please listen to these comments. Don't get bored or tired because this affects all of us, and I just want you to really pay attention to that.
Good, thanks Kerry. Okay, any more public comments at this moment? Okay, we'll close on public comments, and what we're going to do is we're going to go directly to items, item C. And, and item C being the approval of bond line adjustments, applicant white line development LLC, private development LLC, which is to adjust the boundary on the parcel at the end there, 001, 482-20, and 001, 482-21, or future development address at our general location of property is between Great Basin Boulevard and Highway 1593 in South Hill, Illinois. One quarter section southeast and southeast, section 15, Township 16, North Range 63 East. And at this point...
I believe Mr. Chachus has a disclosure.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I must disclose that I have a possible conflict. The two items, C and D, involve a relative of mine, so in this case, I'm going to abstain because I believe it's a clear case. NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest. The matter before the body affects possibly my cousin, my commitment in a private capacity to the interests of my cousin George. You, you have the information there, so I conclude that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would abstain and would not materially affect my relationship with my cousin George because this is a clear case of a disqualifying conflict of interest. I'm going to be abstaining from voting also.
I'm sorry, because it would materially affect your relationship?
It would.
Okay. Thanks, George.
And is there any other on that matter? No disclosures. Counsel's recommending to the commission that you table the matter because of some noticing errors that we need to correct and get the matter rescheduled.
Yeah, apparently there's additional information that is needed for item C. And do we have a motion to table this until...
Make a motion.
Okay, Jesse makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
And Ken a second. All those in favor of tabling it, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're tabling that.
Abstained.
Thanks, George. George abstains. Okay, and we go on to item D. And it has to do with the same, same project and the same guidelines of what we're dealing with, so...
I have the same disclosure, Mr. Chairman. I must disclose that George is my cousin. It's a clear case of possible conflict. Mr. Chairman, NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest. The matter before this body affects my cousin George, my commitment in a private capacity to the interests of George. So I conclude that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would not be materially affected by this relationship, and because of this, a clear case of a disqualifying conflict of interest, I'm going to abstain from voting in this matter.
Okay, thank you, George.
Again, we're recommending that the commission table the matter because of some noticing requirements that need to be corrected.
Okay, and do I hear that motion?
I'll motion to table this as well.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ken a second. All those in favor of tabling item D until further notice, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Abstained.
And George abstains. Okay. Let's go onward here to, drop back to item A. Discussion for possible action, approval of a home location permit applicant is Barry Stark, DBA, he's just arrived. The property address is 101, 1 South, Yoke Highway, space 28, U. N. Nevada, 8301. Type of business would be a ride share.
Good evening. I'm Barry Stark, and we are requesting this approval so we can go forward with the ride share and serve the city of Ely.
Kind of like an Uber sort of...
Yes, sir, exactly. It is, but I'm not calling it Uber. We're not calling it Uber.
No, we are.
It's a different animal. We don't, we're not quite that rich at this point, but we do have three drivers. We have, we followed NRS, we looked at NRS and followed it to the T, and so far, everything's looking very good, except this is another, excuse me, this is another process that we need to take care of, so we're, we are requesting that you grant this request. Please.
Motion approved.
Okay. We've got the motion to approve from George. Do I hear a second?
I've got a question.
Okay.
Based on the fact that there's going to be automobiles involved, I guess I can't quite see how it fits into a home location.
You know, that's a good question, and the only thing I can say in regards to that is that the, the location of the office is not where we're going to be working. We're going to be working out in the streets, and the home location is because that's what we have to have for NRS and for the city of Ely. So what's going to happen at the home is just, we have a dispatch person, and that's it. We do our work there, our mail goes there, and that is it.
So does it legally all end at this, the base of operation, you know?
Yeah. I was excited to see this. This is something we really need here, so...
Well, we're really excited, too. We just, we just got to get all, you know, get all our ducks in a row and get everything going, and ask for everybody's approval, who's approval we need, so...
That was a great question, and I'm, I'll go ahead and second with George.
Okay, George opposed to accept it, and Leah has seconded. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass the unanimous lead.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So we just go to the city tomorrow and go forward from there? Is that what we do? Our next hurdle?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Discussion for possible action, approval of a parcel map. Applicants, Richard and Leslie Sears wish to correct the division of parcel APN 012-160-18 to create a north and south parcel. The address and our general location of the property is 25 County Road, number 1120, South Spring Valley, Nevada, one quarter section southeast, section 27, Township 14, North Range 67 East.
Mr. Chair. NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest. This would affect both item B and I on the agenda today. It involves my husband's business, space and engineering, and he's been hired to do work for this, be it's, you know, surveying work or engineering.
Right.
Our relationship is substantially similar to a blood relationship, probably closer, so I conclude that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would be materially affected by this relationship. And because this is a clear case of a disqualifying conflict of interest, I am going to be abstaining from voting on this item.
On item B?
In this matter. B and I also.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Ken.
I see.
Okay, you can use this one, too.
Good evening. Buzzrosk survey record representing the Sears on this parcel map. This actually was a blunder on my part. When they said they wanted a north-south split, I thought it was a north-south line, but they want a parcel on the north, then a parcel on the south. So we've done a merger and re-subdivision, and we're back in front of you with substantially the same acreage, just a different layout than we had last, though, which I believe was in December.
So they've actually changed?
Yes, we changed the original split. I had the dividing line running north and south, having an east and a west parcel, and they actually wanted a north and a south parcel, so there was some confusion, and this has corrected that problem.
Okay. The streets still work?
Yeah, the kind of roads still, bicep full parcels, there's roadways for both parcels.
Instead of aligning it this way, we're aligning it that way.
Correct.
I move for approval. Okay, you guys vote for approval. Any other discussion, by the way?
Second.
Okay, and George seconds. Take a vote on that. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and, and Ken abstains.
Thank you very much.
Okay, C and D we are skipping. Okay, we're going to E. And we don't want to talk to anybody with a long rundown of stuff, so... Item B listed on tonight's Regional Planning Commission agenda on page three, and item letter E under section one.
John, you have to read all of that.
Okay. For the consideration of proposed application for a reclassification of zoning properties, applicants represented by White West LLC are requesting that properties be changed from MH3 manufactured housing, single family, to C2, general commercial. The applicant's and the property addresses and their general locations in Ely, Nevada, and...
Are listed.
Yeah, and are listed in tonight's Regional Planning Commission agenda on page three, and item letter E under section one. And we're going to set for public discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a possible, I have a possible disclosure, I mean, conflict of interest. My brother is one of the individuals within the affected area.
Okay.
I must abstain only in a clear case, and I think this may be one. The NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest. This matter before, the matter before this body could possibly affect my brother John, my commitment in a private capacity to the interests of my brother. And so I conclude that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would be materially, my brother John would be materially affected by this relationship, and because of this, a clear case of disqualifying conflict of interest, I'm going to abstain from voting in this matter.
Okay. Thank you, George.
One letter to be read in the paper?
Okay, this is a letter regarding our meeting today. I am the owner of the lot located in the northwest corner of 8th and...
You need to read what it's from.
Okay, read it. Okay, top here. Okay, sorry about that. City of Ely Building and Planning Department, Commander Charles Chairman, Leah Brown Vice Chairman, Ken Oliver, member, Mackenzie, member, Mrs. Bernard, member, George Chachus, member, and Drew, Lieutenant, clerk of the board, regarding 215, 2023 RBC meeting agenda, items E, F, and G. I am the owner of the lot located in the northwest corner.
I think.
Right. This is from, from L. Edwards Dietrich. I am the owner of the lot located northwest corner of 8th and D, which is located across D Street facing north of the proposed project, writing to express my opposition to the proposed rezoning and development of parcels and request a postponement of reclassification of zoning until such time as the following concerns or questions are addressed in more depth. The 4% grade, 4 feet for every 100 feet from Altman Street to D Street, proposed by White Fine West Development, seems excessive and could result in intrusive and very high retaining wall running parallel to D Street with the potential equally to the intrusive two-story or higher commercial building casino placed at the northwest corner of 7th and D Street. Parking lot lights located east end of proposed casino from such a high grade is also an issue. Without 3D renderings of potential light pollution shining down upon us on D Street, it is difficult to determine the extent of the intrusion of these parking lot lights as well as car lights as they park on the lot. Two, there are concerns with respect to those renting mobile home spaces along 7th Street , Rita and Willard, have these folks been informed of the ultimate eviction and need to relocate? And when recorded to relocate, will there be option to accommodations, maybe within the city limits, for the smaller older trailers that might be there, be located there? Item three, as a theme for the development in proposal, it doesn't fit with the downtown Ely corner theme, the Highway 15 Lowlais Highway to American theme, or the Nevada Northern Highway theme, or even the mural theme. There's a plethora of YouTube videos, some with millions of views, of folks visiting Ely seeking these attractions. None of these have mentioned that they are seeking a nationally known coffee house that's located in multiple street corners as, as large urban areas throughout the country. Four, the iconic Miller's Service Station is at risk of being torn down. The station is a longtime iconic part of the Ely landscape, but the picture proudly displayed on the Library of Congress website is also a number of online followers of the station along with other historic buildings and service stations along the Highway 50 route. What a shame it would be to lose this. Respectfully submitted, L. Edwards, Dietrich.
Okay. I'll keep my comments to this one agenda item, but it does apply to E, F, and G. When I look at this map requesting that this be rezoned from mobile home to commercial, and the fact that they're abandoning two different parts, an alleyway and a street behind there, it seems to me, looking at the cluster of people that have applied for this, that this deal is not a done deal with this company to come in and develop. If it's, if it's this A-team development that's going to develop this and put in the casino that we've all seen the pictures for and whatnot, it seems to me that these parcels should have already been sold and combined into one for that to have been done, but they're putting the cart before the horse, it appears, in asking for you to change the zoning, because if they don't come in and future develop that, what are these people to do that have a mobile home on that property that live there? I mean, you're asking to change this ahead of, ahead of these sales being completed. This should already, the sales should have gone through if they're going to develop that property as a commercial casino, whatever. But in Mr. Edwards's case, if he doesn't sell, then what are they going to do? You've just changed this to be from, from manufactured housing to commercial, and how is that going to be sold? How is it, how is that going to be done? I, I think they're putting the cart before the horse, asking to have the zoning change tonight, and these two streets, the alley and the street abandoned until the sale of that is final. I give them kudos for putting out the, the copy of the project to the city so that people could look and see what their proposal was, but there's a whole bunch of things that still need to be done here before they go and request a zoning change, and one of them would be to purchase the parcels that are affected by this. So I would just like you to ask, take that into consideration tonight, please.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jim Renzi. I'm the primary owner of both of this property, and I'm 81 years old. My wife is 76. My family don't want to come here, and it's a mom and pop business, and most of them are going by the wayside anyway. And it's a hard business. It's been successful for me for over 30 years, but it's time to move on, and I don't want to see another vacant motel in town. I don't want to see another vacant building in town. And projects like this need to be approved so we can take these old junk properties and turn them into good properties, and I appreciate your consideration in this, with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
My name is Dan Clark. I live at 703 Avenue D, right there on the corner. Wasn't really prepared to come to talk about this, kind of, anyway. I do have, I'm fundamentally opposed. My reasoning is, I don't want to look out my front, this isn't going in my backyard, it's going in my front yard. I don't want to look out my front yard window and see nothing but a big wall. Same token, I don't want to have the traffic changed on my street if at all possible. I have neighbors that have small kids, as we all know, kids ride bikes, they do things out in the street. The traffic on my street, Avenue D, is fairly quiet. By closing off Avenue E, I believe that's going to reroute a lot of traffic. We saw it when they were doing the sewer project, a lot more traffic. This concerns me. I don't, and my personal opinion, I don't think we need a coffee shop and casino in Ely. That's just my own thoughts, but I am fundamentally opposed to this. I don't think it's a good idea, a good use of the land. We need housing in Ely. There's a million other things we could do that would fit into this neighborhood that's already established. It's residential areas. Let's keep it residential. Let's do something for the people in Ely that work here. Let's keep them here. Let's build them some places to live, whether it's an apartment complex like what's down by the Hotel Nevada, or something. Let's, let's do something for the people of Ely instead of another coffee shop and a casino and a gas station, or knows we've got enough of those. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sandy Marino. I live at 795 East 8th Street. My husband and I are in favor of this project. We've, we bought that our property three years ago. We've lived there for two. I don't know how to be, to begin to describe how junky that area is, and I understand what he's saying about the traffic. If you don't close Avenue E, we're going to be bombarded by traffic. And like Jim said, I appreciate Jim being honest about his property. It's time for it to go. And that building, that motel, is not a historic building. It's a junk pile. And you guys down on Avenue D don't see the riffraff that we see up there, the drug dealers, the people coming at all hours of the night to go up and down stairs to the motel to get their stuff and leave. The sheriffs have been really good lately, about doing a good job of cleaning it up, but there's just junk everywhere. And I know some of you said at the last meeting, you drove by the properties to take a look. Were things you can't see by driving by that property? The vacant lot on Avenue E next to the double wide mobile home that will be torn down, that is junk. It's pure junk. It's garbage. That lot was actually for sale, and the potential buyer had to back out because he would have to haul away all the cement, the rebar, whatever junk is in there. It's not dirt. And then you can't see how deep that sewer line is on that piece of property. No one could afford to remove all the garbage, and then it would be almost physically impossible to tie into the sewer line because it is so deep. It runs underneath the back of that mobile home, which has a garage under it. It's deep, so you would have to tear up Avenue E and part of Tom's property to get to that sewer line anyway. So that lot is worthless. No one will buy it, and if you have the money to do it, you're not going to buy it because you're not going to want to look at the back of the motel and all the junk back there. The other lot down on Avenue D is a vacant lot where the laundrette used to be, and is my understanding there's potential for contamination, so no one else is going to take that on. All these years, all these properties have been for sale, no one has been willing to deal with it, to deal with the mess, the time, the money, and you got to admit, our dump chart is an awful lot. If you're trying to haul away debris, it's going to cost a fortune to haul away the debris. You guys don't. You're not in my backyard smelling the pot that comes from some of these areas. I can't even be in my backyard sometimes. The one neighbor has a dog that is loose all the time, and, you know, he talked about the family with the little kids. They're afraid to let their kids play in their yard some days. So is that my time?
Yeah.
Yeah, but anyway, there's a lot of things you can't see just by driving by the parking lot, so...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll close the public input on, on that, and we'll go to E2, discussion for possible action. It's the approval of the application reclassification of zoning properties. Applicants represented by White West LLC are requesting a reclassification of zoning applicants represented by White Mind LLC requesting that properties be changed from MH three manufactured housing, single family, to C two, general commercial. Applicants to the property addressed and or general locations in Ely, Nevada, listed to.